Estacata City Council. If you'll please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America, the true republic which stands one nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I have roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here, thank you very much for that. We are at our first guest presentation and we have the notorious Ryan Carpenter here to speak on the school. So we're really excited.
Yes, we. I'm sorry, you have to hold the mic. We haven't got our.
And is there anything up here that needs to go on? Do you guys have a PowerPoint or?
I think she's gonna put it up there right now.
All right. Good evening, City Council. My name is Ryan Carpenter and I proudly serve as the superintendent for Estacata Schools. I love the new furniture. It looks awesome, professional, and represents the city in a very classy way, and that's very important as well. So I just want to commend you as you continue to improve our status as a community. So very well done. I also want to say thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to speak about Estacata Schools tonight in front of you. We are off to a tremendous start and I'd love to take about twenty or thirty minutes to talk about the start of our school year. But that being said, I really want to talk about growth and how the school district is handling growth and the things that we need in an effort to, just like the city, think about not only today, but what the next thirty years look like for our school district as we process change together as a team, both the city and the school. And so this evening, I really just kind of want to talk about what a bond campaign could look like. I hope to spend about seven or eight minutes talking very briefly about that so we can truly honor our time where I can have more of an open dialogue and conversation with the city council in an effort to potentially answer any questions that might be there, as well as to talk about what the future looks like and how the city and school could partner as we continue to build a thriving community, both inside and outside of our community. So a bond campaign and the city council should be equipped with this packet right here and every registered voter inside our seven hundred and fifty square mile school district should be receiving this in their mails at some point this week as we continue to engage in a deeper conversation about our schools, its facilities, and its future. What we're talking about, and this has been a very collaborative effort with with hundreds of community members, both inside the city and outside the city, is the potential for a one hundred and forty-nine million dollar campaign. A bond would do a hundred and fourteen million dollars, which would build a new high school, eight million to establish a new junior high school on the Estacata High School campus. One million would transform Estacata Middle School into a third elementary school, and that's what our need is, and I'll talk about that more a little bit as we go. Twelve million would be budgeted and set aside for improvement of student safety and complete some of the essential repairs like HVAC, LED lighting, roofs, basically safe, warm, and dry is what we call it. Four million dollars ultimately to install climate-controlled classrooms. As we hear throughout our community, our school districts don't have any type of air conditioning or any type of way to climate control our classrooms. For every degree over seventy-five degrees in the classroom correlates to a one percent decrease in test scores. There's some news data on that in terms of classroom temperature and overall student achievement. And then in this hundred and forty-nine million dollars, we'd set aside ten million dollars to really try to accommodate what our community needs when it comes to community space. The Estacata School District really shoulders the burden of most facility, community use things like baseball fields, soccer fields, tennis courts, pickleball courts. And of course, we all have conversations regularly about what a pool would look like inside our community. What we're trying to do inside this package is to be forward-thinking in terms of what could we do as a community in an effort to continue to keep our school district the central hub of places for people to come down and experience pickleball or lighted tennis or additional turf for field capacity, et cetera. So when we talk about our needs, what we're experiencing right now is tremendous growing pains. Similar to the city, as you work with the the community and registered voters inside the city limits about growth, about apartments, about houses, about neighborhoods and subdivisions, every single one of those people have children that are coming to our schools. It's our obligation to serve any and all children who walk inside that door, and we take that very seriously and very proudly. But that means still, regardless, there are more of them. In the last five years, our student enrollment has grown twelve percent. And as Estacata, as we all know, is the number one fastest-growing town in the state of Oregon by percentage. I just really like saying that. Number one in the state of Oregon. That also means that we're one of the fastest-growing school districts also in the state of Oregon. We did a population study about three weeks ago, and inside that population study, our school district is expected to grow an additional twenty-two percent in the next two years. River Mill Elementary School is the boundary that is taking the greatest significance of the growth inside that boundary. Today, we have two portables, which is four additional classrooms outside of River Mill Elementary School, which is full. And we are in the process right now of putting an additional portable to house a larger fifth-grade class than we had anticipated. We also have aging facilities. The Estacata High School, Estacata Middle School, River Mill Elementary School are all sixty years or older. We have about twenty million dollars in school repairs that need updates, and believe it or not, one percent of our district budget goes to facilities. And just really quickly, because I get this as a frequently asked question, why don't you just do the maintenance on your own? Why don't you budget for replacing the entire roof of Estacata High School? And while all of those things make sense when you're talking about a personal financial budget, like our personal budgets, the difficulty is, is the state says you get this amount of taxpayer money, and that's designed for educating today's children. There is no money that's given to us to fix or fix our facilities or upgrade our facilities. That's what a bond is designed for, and that's a community conversation. And the community has to decide to invest in or fix its schools. What the money we receive on an annual basis is to hire teachers, feed children, educate children, and transport them safely. And we do that excellently here in this school district. But I just wanted to clarify the difference between repairing a roof and making sure that the fifth-grade class has twenty kids or less inside of it. Those are two completely different things. And then we also have four hundred thousand dollars received from our new build taxes last year. So this is where we work together, the construction excise tax that everyone pays one dollar per square foot. We are receiving income for that, and that is money that we can spend on refurbishing our facilities. So our budget annually to fix things is about four hundred thousand dollars a year. To put air conditioning in Clackamas River Elementary School costs about eight million dollars. And so you can see as we try to chip away at some of these high priority items, it's just unaffordable for us. So the bond would raise about a hundred and forty-nine million dollars for Estacata's kids and would raise taxes two dollars and thirty-eight cents per thousand assessed value, not market value, assessed value, two completely different things. The bond would cost the average homeowner about forty additional dollars a month. And our current bond expires in twenty twenty-five, allowing us to implement this bond at the end of the previous one. So I did want to throw some boxes up here, but that doesn't appear to have made it. But we do have a high-level conceptual design of what a new high school could look like and what the new middle school could look like as well. And so I am excited to engage in that conversation as well. But I wanted to honor the time put together today to allow the city to ask questions and to give me the opportunity to be as transparent as well as work through this process with all of you as we move in this specific direction.
All right, Council.
You're gonna have, we're gonna have three elementary schools. Is it gonna be a choke point going into a single middle school? Are you changing the structure of the grades?
So that's a conversation. We have a committee right now that's hosted by several parents and other community members, and we are going to determine what the best recipe for our future success looks like. So it is possible that we could have three kindergarten through fifth grades like we do currently. It's also possible that, in fact, we're talking about making that middle school just the seventh and eighth grade. Our parents have told us they really want our sixth-grade children to stay at the elementary level. And so K six is also a conversation that we're having. And then there's a different group of people, and I'm actually relatively open-minded or supportive of this idea, and that would be to create Clackamas River and River Mill Elementary School as K three. And then the old middle school would be fourth grade, fifth grade, and sixth grade, allowing for a greater capacity for more like-age children. Keeping it on campus, though, is so critical because that allows us to distribute our resources in an effective way. Thank you.
Okay. Sure.
Would this bond then sort of open up and allow for the expansion of adding in more extracurricular activities, like getting art back into the classrooms, more music programs, so on and so forth? I know this is just more building and structure, but I don't know if that would end up freeing some things up for those extras.
It does, and that's an excellent question. There are two specific programs, and you you mentioned arts, which I'll talk about here in a second. But there are two specific programs that are in the nineteen-sixties era for career technical education that we offer because of the space it creates. And the first one is manufacturing. Our manufacturing rooms and the power that's associated with it really only allows us to weld. And in today's world, there are so many more technical assets that our kids need to learn in order to be industry-ready to move into it. And so for us to completely overhaul our electrical grid to make sure that we have CNC machines and different types of machines where really we're working with computers, and the computers are pumping out the products, this is the type of thing we need our kids to become educated in, and with our current facilities, that the way they are now, really welding is one of the only things that we're able to support through that process. Also, business is a very popular one amongst our children. Our kids are really hungry for some type of business CTE classes. And so allowing a new space inside our, a potential new high school would really give our kids the freedom and flexibility to be innovative, to be more entrepreneurial in terms of how we sell Estacata gear, for example, or could we have some type of store that exists inside the center hub of our high school, allowing our kids to be more business-minded through that process? When you talk about art, one of the things that is important for us is in our current art makeup, all we really have is kiln and open spaces for kids to to draw. When you talk about, you know, computer artistic design and some of the new things like coding and video gaming and all of the things that really do engage our students and and work into the workforce, this is an area where we're decades behind because we just don't have the facilities to compete with kids like Westland, kids from Wilsonville, kids from Sandy, just because we don't have that bond space and facilities. And and I think we're not preparing our kids equally for that for that very reason.
Thank you.
Yeah.
A couple of questions. When when would the community be looking to vote on this? And then should it pass? I see it wouldn't go into effect until the other one, the other bond expires in twenty twenty-five. When would we expect to see some progress made?
Yeah, very good. So right now, what I'm doing all around our community is I'm speaking to groups, trying to communicate what a bond package could look like. We polled a package similar to this last April, and there was forty-nine percent community approval for the package that we tested last April. Our school district and our great school board of directors, who are also elected by the people, really want to see fifty-five percent approval or better. And so what the school district and the board is doing right now is we're trying to communicate like we're doing this evening, and then we plan to pull again in November. If the November numbers show growth from forty-nine percent to fifty-five percent, then you can expect us to go for a school bond this coming May. However, if it shows that we're at fifty-one percent, or if we slide backwards into forty-five percent, then we're gonna wait, and that because that's feedback to us that we need to continue to communicate and and find a package that meets the threshold of our community. However, if we are successful in passing that bond, which is is something that needs to happen at some point in this community, and we're hoping this package is one that's sellable, we do want to try to move as quickly as possible because the thing that I'm also trying to tell people as I get this frequently asked question is a hundred and forty-nine million dollars is really expensive. I live in this community. I pay those taxes too. That's very expensive. But I've got news for the people who are stressed about that. This is the cheapest it's going to get. As we know, things are getting more and more expensive. What used to be a thirty-million-dollar elementary school is now a ninety-million-dollar elementary school. When I go to Costco, I used to spend three hundred dollars. Now I spend four hundred and fifty dollars. Like, it will never get cheaper. And so a hundred and forty-nine million dollars right now, we believe, and our community who has helped us build this package believes this will address the needs of today as well as it will address the needs of the next thirty years. Because if we're unsuccessful in some type of campaign like this at a hundred and forty-nine million, and our community is adverse to that, the next one's gonna be two hundred and forty million, and then it's gonna be two hundred and ninety million. And at some point, our community, as growing as it is, we have to address the needs of aging schools. I'm just hoping we can do it sooner and cheaper rather than later and more expensive, because at some point, it has to happen.
Yeah, I would agree with that, and thank you. Thank you for this presentation. I would agree with that. We probably, we should take this pretty serious and move on. Working in construction, I would I would agree with you. Your material costs fluctuates like crazy right now, so I can speak to that personally. I have kind of a two-part question, and that's on the, one, competitively, where do we, where do we right now on the, from an educational standpoint, where do we line up against Sandy and some of these other communities like that are closer to our size? And then second part would be if we talked about location and parking plan, as you know, like that backfield area and all that stuff, that that becomes a mess. What what implications to traffic and things like that with this, especially with the new development?
Yeah, thank you. We're actually doing very well as a school district in spite of aging facilities. Kids who go to Estacata Schools are really leading the pack in in many different areas when it comes to science. We're competing right now with Lakos Wigo, Westland, and Wilsonville. We are, I'll say it publicly because I enjoy it. We're destroying Malala, Gladstone, and some of our other opponents who are there. Malala obviously is the same as us, who struggles to pass a bond. And so I would say that we're apples to apples in comparison in terms of what we're doing. We're doing better than they are, but we're working with the same facilities. But we are struggling a little bit when it comes to reading and mathematics, and some of that is just the demographic in whom we serve. When you compare us to some other folks in Clackamas County like Lakos Wigo and Westland, Wilsonville, it's a different demographic of people. But what's interesting is, is if you were to point at where a thriving community is right now, I would point just the same at school district, at communities who are investing in their schools. And and that's what we're trying to do. When we talk about pathways to college, we're decades behind. We're just getting started in that. When we're talking about career technical education, we're still stuck in the sixties while everyone else is doing some pretty cool work. And that gives our kids a disadvantage as they exit our high school, equipped and ready to go with the knowledge and skills necessary, but still behind when it comes to opportunities that they've experienced through the school process. The second question, obviously, is we're growing. Sixth Street is an absolute disaster at the beginning of school and at the end of school. We all are experiencing that pain, and that also goes for our facilities and our fields. We have record numbers of youth soccer, football, basketball, baseball, softball. I mean, our our fields and the facilities are at full capacity and then some. And so inside this bond, a hundred and fourteen million, which would be attached to that new high school, that does also increase parking space. So if you can imagine the front of Estacata High School, Wade Creek runs right through it. There's a bridge that crosses it. The other side of Wade Creek, the high school side, is full of parking space. But in front of the high school, there's just a tiny little strip, and then there's grass that goes all the way to the creek. So inside that hundred and fourteen million proposal, we would, we would make that parking lot extend all the way to the creek. And then the back twenty acres, which we've now partnered with the city to build, which is, by the way, at full capacity already with youth football and soccer in the fall. It's amazing what's going on back there. It's really expensive to put roads and parking back there. And again, it's just not something that we can pull the money out of our pocket to pay for. So this would be a community investment into community spaces to allow everybody to access that regularly.
You would anticipate it to open up the flow of traffic a little bit better, though, correct?
A hundred percent. Yep. And I also think once the city punches in from Cemetery Road into Hillway, that's also gonna alleviate that because whatever that is, Broadway, that goes past our bus barn into, that is also a circus. Yeah.
Any more questions?
I do.
Heidi.
Yeah. On the website, it shows the principal amount cannot exceed one hundred and forty-nine million. Are we overshooting what we need for the bond to have a surplus? Are we, if if we're allocated for up to one hundred and forty-nine, but are utilizing one forty-nine, where's the safety net?
Heidi, I really appreciate that question because that's something that's been top of mind when we've tried to put together what a price and what we can promise pays for what. We've seen Portland Public Schools. We've seen so many other school districts pass a bond and then immediately go back to their community and say, prices went up and we can't afford what we said we were gonna purchase. This price point and what I'm telling you inside this high school, middle school, and all of the above, these are the things that we feel we can promise at minimum that their one hundred and forty-nine million dollars goes to. And the reason and the way that we're doing that is we've had three different professional companies come out and say, okay, here's what it costs to build a new, a new high school. And by the way, when I say new high school, I'm not talking about something extravagant with windows everywhere and, you know, I don't know, some type of figurine on top of the high school that like spins in circles and lights when we score touchdowns. Like, I'm talking about a humble, practical, modest space that's used efficiently in order to serve our kids now and prepare for that growth. So I wanted to make that clear first. The highest number we got from all three of the companies who gave us bids was nine hundred and ninety dollars per square foot for brand-new construction high school space. And so we'll pick the lowest bidders if we're successful in this. But we wanted to make sure we chose the most expensive one here because at the end of the day, we want to be able to say, we promised you we would do this because people who passed the last bond in the year two thousand, you know, there were some things that I've heard. I wasn't here in two thousand. Neither was anybody who works for me or with me. So this is a completely different group of people in this bond campaign. But I've been told in the year two thousand, there were things that weren't done that were promised. And that's something that we're very receptive to, and it's something we want to be able to ensure we do what we say we do here if the community is willing to entrust us with their investment to reinvest in their school system.
Just one more thing I want to add in there, Ryan. Is there any plan to use local? Local construction? I mean, we've talked about this and talked about this, and even at a city level, is there a way to get local people working on this project if it were to pass?
Yes, and that is one of our top priorities. And I think what we did with the turf football field is a good example of that, is how we were able to leverage our hard-working community, specifically when it comes to excavation and, you know, groundbreaking construction. This is a place where I think not only can we save costs, but we can also employ our local community in an effort to help build this. And there's no greater story than to say that this was invested with by Estacata and built by Estacata. And I think those are values that truly represent who we are. On the other hand, it's also important for us to be cost-conscious. There's a double-edged sword when you try to go local, and I know, being the mayor and being on city council, you understand that too. We want to support our local people, but it's those very same people that continue to criticize us for not being cost-effective and not being, doing good work with taxpayer dollars. And so we're gonna be mindful of both. We're gonna make sure we put a quality product. We want this thing to reflect Estacata and its values and hire as many folks as possible. But we also want to do what's best with the people's money. And if that means we hire outside because it's a better deal, we think that that's a good, a good thing, too.
Right. What will this increase the school's capacity to, and how long do you anticipate that new capacity to be good for?
Great question. This is why I think this really sets us up for the next thirty years. So if we look at the top, the new high school is, it's a one thousand two hundred square-foot building is what a hundred and fourteen million is budgeted for at nine hundred and ninety dollars a square foot. Milwaukee High School, which is in the North Clackamas School District, just built a one thousand two hundred square-foot building, and that holds roughly eleven hundred, what's that?
It's not twelve hundred square feet, right?
I'm sorry, a hundred and twenty thousand. Yes, thank you. The windows are on their way right now. Yep. A hundred and twenty thousand square feet, thank you, holds a little over eleven hundred students. Estacata High School today is just about five hundred and fifty. And so that allows us to move the high school into updated, competitive space, efficient space. It includes a new gymnasium, which is something that we need. It includes updated arts, like performing arts, band and choir, all of the above inside that space as well. And then so that, so that gives us capacity to grow beyond that. And then the other side of the high school where the high school currently exists, this is where our seventh and eighth graders would go to. And it would be on the same campus, but completely separate with a completely separate, different culture. And in this model, this gives us twenty-eight classrooms, and the current Estacata Middle School has twenty-two classrooms. And so it does allow us to, we'd be eliminating a grade level in the middle school, and then we'd also be increasing by six or seven classes, allowing for future growth. And then the third elementary school, because that's ultimately what we need, the the family who's moving in here is the young family buying their first home with young children. We are blowing up kindergarten through fifth grade right now. And so our real need is at the elementary school. And so our ability to divide into three different elementary schools does give us the capacity to set ourselves up for long-term growth.
Thank you.
Any more questions, Ryan? Well, we thank you, Ryan. That was very impressive. I think everybody heard you, and I'm glad you're you're considering the local part of that. I know that a lot of us love these kids and love the schools, and the sports program was just awesome. I can't even tell you now. So we're happy. We're all a part of this, and you brought it to us, so.
Thank you very much, and it's a team effort. And if you want to get more involved, there's a lot of things that you can do to help us communicate this, to play a leadership role inside this city. This is an opportunity for you to be a leader and help us really continue to build that thriving community from a different angle. And I would love to work with any of you. So please reach out later if you would like to work with us from a different capacity. Thank you.
Great, and true.
I, this doesn't have anything to do with this discussion, but I just want to commend the boys' basketball team. They volunteered, some of the boys volunteered at the at the Oktoberfest, and they were very respectful, hard workers, did a great job, and I just, I really want to, you know, commend them. They were, they were amazing. It was good to see them out there. Good, good citizens.
Thank you. I will cascade that along to them. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Ryan, after this is all over, you make sure that they all have your immediate contact, because if they have any questions, we'd like to be able to.
I sure will. Thank you.
Zoom in on that. All right, thank you.
I would just like to say thank you for for bringing us all this information and for current, especially current bid packages and interest rate. As a parent, the in the community, I appreciate your hard work and dedication to the kids of this community. That is what it's all about.
Thank you.
We expect you to sing a song.
Well, I'm holding the mic. Like, I couldn't keep going.
I think it'll stay. Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, we are at the first citizen and community group comment section. So I'm gonna start reading off some names. I have David Schomburg.
All right, is this thing working? Yep. All right. So what I am here for today is, as we all know, Comcast is currently out, building out their infrastructure. They've been working in our neighborhood up at Cascadia Ridge. They started the middle last week, and we've had, I'm sure you guys down here at City Hall have had lots of phone calls from people. We've got a lot of very upset residents. And I sit on the HOA board, so I'm here on behalf of the HOA to see if the city will help us in any way. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the pedestals that they're putting in people's front yards. They're about forty-four inches tall. They're about a foot across. They're putting them in places that are gonna block people's access to side yards and stuff like that. I know when they went through Campadella, they put in everything pretty much in the ground. So and when I spoke with the person from Comcast today, he adamantly told me, no, that is not possible. We're not doing that again. So we're really looking for the city in some way to help us do this. I know there's four or five other residents here tonight that are also gonna speak on this, but it's, it's not a good situation. So.
I've been paying attention to. I've been paying attention to Facebook and I can see it all over there. So.
It's even better on Nextdoor.
I bet. Anybody have questions for David? Thank you, David. We will address this and we'll check into city, see what we can do for it.
Sorry, that's microphone's a little molly. We need to get it, our stand set up.
Hey, John Costello.
Thank you. I'm John Costello, as resident of Estacada. Been here about ten years now and Mary Drinkwine and Councilman. Appreciate you letting me listen today. Uh, I would hear just simply comment that I have a daughter who lives in Campanella Estates. So when it came to the Comcast development, if you drive through there, I'm sure many of you have. Every other home was supposed to have a pedestal such as ones they're proposing for Cascadia Ridge. What they did was they buried a lot of those, including my daughters. Now, the differences between the two estates, this Campanella Estates, most of those lots don't even have more than about four feet on either side of the house. They're very close. Majority of the homes up in Cascadia Ridge, including mine, have at least ten to sixteen feet on both sides. So where they're proposing to put some of these, um, above ground lots will literally block any access whatsoever for anyone who has RVs or built RV pads both for whatever, which they're required to put behind the RV fence. Some, now, I currently have three utility boxes on my lot already and I don't care. It doesn't bother me at all. This is not, my perception is not about whether or not Comcast should put in or not. It is a private company who will be making a profit off these locations. Whether or not there can't reduce those or at least come out to the residents and say, if there's a phone number or a contact person that the council could request, that Comcast say, if a resident has a particular issue with where the location might be, can they contact someone and make a reasonable accommodation to maybe either move it? It's gonna be put in, that's not for issue, but can they move it or lower the ground? That would be the only request I would see that if city council can request that Comcast uh, provide some sort of contact.
Yeah. I mean, that seems reasonable. I think, uh, city staff, that sounds like something we can.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. And we do have a contact number, um, but I need to, this is slightly different um, information that I was understanding from Comcast previously. So we'll look into that and get back to you.
Yeah, we appreciate. I mean, it's just a reasonable accommodation for the individual sites. They're gonna put it in either way, which is fine, but just if there's an issue that the residents would not be able to re, to move any vehicles or access to do landscaping in the backyard from their side yard. That's the difference between the two estates and the size. The size of Cascadia Ridge is, I'm sure. I, I know Paul knows. The size difference is how many lots are up there versus Campanella. Yeah, so, thank you very much.
Melanie, I know that when they came through Campanella, the number that they were giving people or whatever to contact them with a similar issue, they had a lot of issues with the foreman or whoever it was returning calls or being receptive. So I think, uh, on this, we should sort of seek project management or design or some, somebody a little bit higher up the food chain for him.
Yeah, once they, once, yeah, once they came through, once they had a contact person that came through and said, okay, maybe instead of every single lot being the same way, the, the pad, maybe we make reasonable combination for individual lots. And as it is now, they basically have any raised devices at the intersections. Yeah, so, thank you.
Great. Cause we did have a lot of concerns from the Campanella folks when they were, they started doing work in there. But it seems like the way that it's turned out, it was, the issues were resolved. Although I see if they still have a few open uh, spots they need to finish, but we'll check, we'll check into that.
Yeah, that wouldn't work too well. Uh, Jeremy Costello.
Thank you, Jeremy Costello, resident of Estacada on Rockwell Drive. And I have similar statements previously made by Mr. Schomburg and Mr. Costello. I would be directly negatively impacted based on the placement and style of the pedestals that they're placing. Prohibited me from removing or placing my, in my case, trailer boat back in the side yard where it's at. I think reasonable accommodations are necessary. In this case, what I have been told uh, from one of the representatives is that a couple days before they start placing these things, they will hang a door hanger on your door. To me, that seems very short notice, pres- presumably forty-eight hours to try and catch this crew who is gonna be placing this and say, hey, can we discuss where we're gonna put this or what style? Do we even have the option of saying, okay, if it's gonna cost more to put an in-ground one, can I fork that out myself? Yeah. Um, it doesn't seem like there's been very good communication to the residents who are gonna be negatively impacted by this. And having driven through Campanella earlier today like others, I personally would not be opposed to what that layout is now. It wouldn't negatively impact me nearly as much, but from the impact that we've been hearing so far, it's uh, a pretty negative approach that they're taking with these pedestals wherever they want, whenever they want. And with a negative attitude of, we're just gonna do it. Um, so that is my hope is that the council can take this up an urgent matter because this construction is being being dug right now as we speak. And I know I am personally gonna be impacted by this in the next week and a half to two weeks most. So it's very short notice timeline. Thank you.
Thank you. Shirley Burt.
I was gonna talk about the parking, the moving, the seventy-two hour parking on the streets, especially motorhomes down the forty-eight. But I, I'd rather talk about River Mill, River Mill School. Ryan and I have talked about this before about the safety. I mean, all the other schools have stopped. I have the safety cones, everything going through there. But River Mill needs a speed bump on Broadway from six to the school. Around the corner by the house, they need another speed bump. And a speed bump on tenth and Casadere Court. Because people come flying through there, especially during the school hours. And people, you know, you gotta pull out in Casadere, off Casadere Court and you're taking your life in your own hands. And as far as cost, we can, could we put the black and yellow ones like Ryan and then put over there by the grade school? It says it's too expensive to put speed bumps in, but these speed bumps lay down, you screw them into the cement and they're done.
Yeah.
And then there's a stop sign that should go on, on tenth and, and, uh, Broadway by to come in out of Casadere, um, out of Campanellas. Because people come out of Campanellas and they speed right through that school zone. Like it's not even there. And stuff, but that's my main thing is to do some safety at River Mill. All the other schools have safety. They have crosswalks. I mean, we finally got two crosswalks in, but they have crosswalks. They have, they have the cones. I, you know, everything, but River Mill has no safety whatsoever. So that's my, that's my gripe for the night. River Mill needs safety.
Good gripe, surely. I'm on the same plate as you.
Yeah, and they.
I, I thought it needed speed bumps there for a while.
I mean, I, I'll just pull them over and make them slow down. I got cussed out one day and I suppose they'll slow your butt, except slow your butt down, you know? But we do need safety zones there and sixth, sixth and Broadway too, what Ryan was bringing up. We need, uh, some kind of, uh, flashing lights or something there because I watch kids go across the street and I watch people just blow right through them. And so we have a one on tenth and tenth and two twenty, uh, two tenth and ill grace. Why don't we have one on sixth and we, on sixth and Broadway? So.
Alright, thank you, Shirley. We gotta save some for next one. Okay, Carolyn Kimball.
Um, I wanna talk about the, um, Estacada Lake Apartment Meeting that happened on Monday. So the below statement was taken verbatim from the opening comments of the October second meeting. The design review for downtown projects can be done entirely by staff alone. We don't have to appoint any committee at all. So we could have just quietly done the review ourselves, not appointed a committee, not posted it publicly. Um, probably would have saved some headaches, but, um, the point of convening the design review committee is to make sure that we staff don't miss something, et cetera. And as a resident of Estacada, the commentary screams non-transparency to me. Just because you can do something doesn't mean you should. Even though the meeting was eventually open to the public, it was done with very short notice during a timeframe where many residents couldn't make time to show up and speak. I know a lot of people who didn't even know that it was happening. I don't know all of the laws around codes for building permits or where buildings can and cannot be, uh, built, demolished or refurbished in town. What I do know is that small town and cities have very long memories. And when meetings and processes are not readily made available to the citizens, not only do rumors start, but the pitchforks and torches come out, metaphorically speaking. Haven't taken the time to walk around the area and question, I would like someone to help to answer the following questions. The Red Fox has forty rooms and the adjacent building houses twelve. Where are the occupants, occupants of fifty-two housing units going to go when the construction takes place? What will the rental fees be in the new studio and one-bedroom apartments? If these are supposed to be useful housing units for disabled and elderly, where are the elevators? How many ADA units would be made available? It seems that having only availability on the ground floor for these residents is very ableist. Many parts of that area and location are known drug areas with houseless campers in the woods near the water. What process is in place to relocate all of these people? The motel upgrade wasn't listed in the permitting plan. I only heard the, the developer say that they wanna keep the motel and upgraded. What does that mean? Bringing in studio and one-bedroom units to a town that has very little inventory and even fewer affordable housing choices for families seems a little short sighted. This will no doubt bring people into town from out of the area. This doesn't seem very different from the proposed project that was backed by the county a few years ago. Are the developers getting any federal or county grant money to help to build these apartments? Since Estacada does not have twenty-four hour policing available, having a hundred unit density in a location already overrun with crime seems irresponsible. Can our public utilities, especially our wastewater treatment plant, handle this? What about the electrical infrastructure? Has there been a traffic study? Is a traffic study required? If not, why? There are many beautiful old trees surrounding the proposed building sites and there are requirements for, and are there requirements for an environmental impact statement? Can I finish? I just have a.
At any time, we have to stick to the rules. We're sorry. We're sorry for that, but, um, yeah, I'll, I'll turn this over to staff really quick to, to kinda answer some of these questions.
So that was, that was rejected. Um, it, it, the, the proposal that was submitted and, and made public did not, did not meet the, the city's specific criteria. So, the, um, we've reviewed a number of other things. There's some ambiguity in the code. My recommendation would be that um, the city council look at this code to make sure that it still meets the vision and values. The code was drafted during a time where the city was really trying to, um, trying to attract, um, downtown, uh, businesses and development. And so it's pretty permissive. And I think that the economy's changed since that and, uh, council's turned over largely since that. Um, so there, the two things, there one, to make sure that the objective standards are objective. Uh, and there's some specific items that Taylor and I've already noted. And then the second is to, to make sure that that's still uh, that this code overall, I'm not just talking project specific, I'm talking the overarching code still meets the vision and values of, of the community in the place.
I think that's a good idea. We should look at that.
Yeah.
Um, but does that help answer some of your questions? Okay. Alright. Yeah, Mike, go ahead.
Just wanted to clarify, cause I've, I've heard some of the comments that were made about, um, the city staff. If something's an outright use, it's a permitted use in a zone. And whenever the downtown zone was designed, there's, there's language in there that allows for multifamily residential. And if it's not on Broadway, Main Street or two twenty-four, the condition that it, the lower floor is retail and the upper floors can be residential, that's only in those three areas. So when, when the city gets an application for a project that's a permitted use, the only thing that they can do, they have to evaluate each project, not with what type of apartments are in it. Um, or who's gonna live in it. They have to use the objective standards in Title sixteen to evaluate it. So they have a checklist that they go down for that zone and they just go down and see if it meets every single criteria. In this particular application, some of the criterias weren't met. If, and I understand why people are upset with the, I, I've heard all the arguments for, for the development that's going in there. Um, but they can't look at that when they're evaluating the standards. And if you're upset with the fact that they're going in there, it's not the city staff that's allowing it to go in there. It's the Title sixteen for the, for the code portions and the comprehensive plan. It actually requires that if a multifamily project's going in that zone, that a minimum of sixteen units per acre are developed. So it's like, why are we having this high density? Well, the city didn't do that. The, the only people that can change the code is the council. And if that's something that the community wants us to look at, I'd love to hear that feedback come back. Hey, let's take a look at the downtown zone and see if that meets the vision for what the community wants. That's something that we can fix, but, um, some of the speeches come out against the city for doing their job. I mean, when, when applications come in, they would get, they would get themselves in a lot of legal trouble. If they looked at one apartment complex application that came in differently than another one. This one's got two and three bedrooms. This one's got studio and one bedrooms. They, they're not allowed to legally look at it that way. They have to just, does it meet the standards, looking at it clear and objectively? If there's an argument to be made that we don't want apartments in the downtown zone, that's a valid argument. And it's something that the city council can bring up and look at if, if we wanna change the, what's a permitted use in the downtown zone. But just so you know, that, that same project can go in any area of Estacada that's zoned R three. The North City Residential, anywhere in there, high density housing can go in there. So if that project, the only reason that it got snagged up in the downtown zone is because they didn't meet some of the criteria that were met. So if you're right, if they do change the, the design to meet those criteria and if it's still allowed in that zone, it's, the city can't say no to, the city staff is not allowed to say legally to say no to that. The only thing they could do is we could change the, the language in the, in the zone to make it not allowed. Yeah.
So. Yeah, it's, uh, so my understanding was that it was zoned commercial and the apartments were residential. So that was a misunderstanding or not clearly defined, understandable. As far as the city doing their job with the zoning, I have a problem with that. The fact that people didn't find out about it in very good notice to have time to come and talk about it, to me, is there's a problem with it. I, I believe that there's a problem with that. I don't think that that's very transparent. Whether or not it's the way you are allowed to do it, whatever your law is. If the zoning over there for those apartments needs to change, who needs to take care of that to participate in that process? Is that something the council does?
Yes.
So is the council going to do that?
I'd be more than happy to take a look at it.
Yeah.
As, as the council, put it on the agenda and, and take a look at it. The, I guess where would you, where, how would the city staff know which projects they need to bring to the public and which they don't? If it's a permitted use and they get applications all, I've been through the process of applying for permit for development in the city. And there was no, there, we didn't have any meetings. We're putting in a twenty-seven acre project in the industrial park. There was no, there was no public forum at, at the pre-construction meeting. Um, we reached out neighbors and then they came at the. We reached out neighbors, and then they came at the planning commission and other things, but this is a permitted use in a zone that allows it. How would the city staff know which projects to reach out to the community? But I mean, it seemed like for me, they knew that this would be they would want community feedback, and so they opened it up to a public forum. And then, they reached out to the people that were participating in the meeting and found out what times worked best for the people that were going to be given feedback. And they went with that timing. It wasn't a conspiracy to pull something over the community's eyes. They were just working with the people that were going to be participating and their schedules. And so, I just wish that if you're upset about it, be upset with the zoning, and that's something we can work with, and it's something that we could take a look at.
And that's fair. I think the fox, the red fox, is the problem. This community has a very long memory, and it's a pushpoint. It's like someone poked the bear. Whether the zoning and all that stuff was legal, staff could have done whatever they wanted. As soon as the information was out there, people got angry about it. And I think rightfully so.
Thank you.
I'd like to comment on that as well, especially on the transparency part. I was listening to that meeting live, I was not here, but I attended it via Zoom. And the individual that you're referencing, I actually spoke to directly later that evening and said, hey, under the guidelines of transparency and learning to garner trust between the community and city leadership, although that is our right to say or to do this process, and said, wait, legally, there's a different tone that we can have when addressing the community. So, I will take this one on the chin and apologize on behalf of the city council or the leadership. I say, we're sorry that it was worded in a manner that's offensive to you. But that is not the staff's prerogative, and I will say that they took ownership of this, and that same individual actually recommended denial. It wasn't some sleight of hand, it wasn't like that. So, I can assure you from a leadership standpoint that we addressed maybe changing commentary going forward, or how we may introduce things in speech. But we're growing, just like this community is, and we're working on it, right? So, I apologize that it came across hostile. I think that's what you're kind of looking for as well, but that was not the intent. And as Councilman McElroy said, if you guys want us to take a look at the code, then you can email our staff, and we'll put it on an agenda item, and we can discuss this further at that time. But legally, from a standpoint, they were above board, and it was corrected, it was talked about from that standpoint, communication.
Can I add one thing very quickly? The code is very flimsy on its direction for staff to process those design review applications, or appoint a committee to do the review. And we staff hate when the code is flimsy. We want it to tell us what to do, and we just go and do it, right? So, that's another thing that the council could consider, and it sounds like maybe the community, some community members would appreciate there being clarity in the code that directs staff to appoint a committee for certain types of projects, like projects that are over a certain size or something like that, certain types of projects. Maybe we have to appoint a committee and do a public noticing, whereas smaller projects maybe could be staff-reviewed, right? That's something that the council could also add into those code amendments.
And that sounds like a wonderful idea. I think that needs to be imposed. I think any sizable development, such as this one is, should be in the view of the public. It's our waterfront, it's a jewel, right? So, the last thing we want to see is a multi-hive complex sitting right on the waterfront. But, you know, that said, like they said, they followed the rules in bringing it forward, not in a clarification way. I think we could have been clearer, you know? I think in the future, we'll direct staff in that way, that we have better clarity on these projects, so this doesn't become a problem ever again. So, we appreciate your comment. Okay. Next, we're at the consent agenda, you've all had a chance to read the minutes. Do I have a motion on the floor?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, first, do I have a second?
Second.
First and second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Okay, we are at department and committee reports, so I will start off on this side, Mike.
So, the traffic and public safety meeting happened. I got some notes on an update of everything, I'll do my best to recall everything. So, the new deputy is going to be coming in at the end of October, beginning of November, to replace the deputy that we lost. And then, the brand-new position deputy should be in place by March. Is that correct? All right, got it. There was discussions from members of the committee wanting a crosswalk at Highway 224 in front of the hitching post where the ADA ramps are in place already by Pepe's food cart. There was a discussion about that, because there's a jog in that crosswalk, I believe that's the one that had the jog in it, that's meant to make people slow down. And some feedback we got from our chief was that ODOT can control, typically controls whether or not you can put a crosswalk on a state highway. And so, it was a little bit trickier than we thought on that. We were going to get some more information on that. The committee recommended getting some more twenty-five mile-per-hour signs for neighborhoods, so we could start placing those. That would maybe help with one of the other members' concerns. Lieutenant Chief Mendoza went over some crime stats year-over-year, they remained relatively flat. And we're coming into the, what last year was the busiest time, last year was October and November. We're looking, the chief was going to be taking a look at those stats this year to see if that's a trend that's ongoing. There were some discussions about zombie RVs towing policy and challenges that came up. Some that were up Highway 224, and we just discussed the process for that. And some of the challenges in that is that even when they're marked for being towed, the cost burden to deal with those RVs, they're not likely to get picked up unless they get a commitment from the jurisdiction that they're willing to pay for the disposal of those RVs, because it's not like when you tag a car, there's some value that you could auction it off. They're going to be stuck with it, no one's going to go buy one of those RVs to keep it. So, then they're stuck with it, and they have to dispose of it, and they're pretty expensive, so. Sorry. Last one was, oh, that's it for right now.
All right, we talked to the fire department about a burn on those things. They have the fire training center right there, wouldn't that be a great place? And I would save some money, send it to the junkyard in a can, that'd be perfect, right? But, no, thanks.
So, downtown Estacada Commission met, and the topic of conversation were pretty much dominated by two events, the success of the Oktoberfest. It was a well-attended event. They talked about what they did right, what they did wrong, where they can improve for next year. That committee, I think they have their heads going in the right direction. They're really looking forward to, you know, putting on a better event, even as successful as it was this year. Putting on a better event next year, so kudos to them. And then, they talked about they're taking over the Christmas tree lighting, which is the first Friday in December. Trying to make it more of a downtown Estacada event, getting the downtown businesses involved with, you know, hot cocoa slash apple cider walk. Getting people out in the downtown area if the weather permits. Just getting more involvement, and then also getting helping to get the event back inside instead of just outside in the rain. But it just, you know, good direction from the downtown Estacada Committee. They really, like I said, they're going in the right direction. And then, the Arts Commission met, and segue into that, the tree lighting ceremony, there's going to be a subcommittee with the Arts Commission and the downtown Estacada Commission, and I think they're going to ask if there's any community members that want to join that subcommittee. Just to make the event, the tree lighting event as, you know, as good as we can possibly make it, you know? So, that's all I really have from those two committees.
All right, thank you, sure.
Yeah, so, the Parks and Rec met in a joint meeting with the Planning Commission, and we got new city laptops, and I left all my notes from that meeting on the so I'm trying, I'm like, going to recall as much as I can. First order of business, the Parks and Rec did have some they expressed some of their concerns and a little bit of, you know, disappointment in the fact that the wastewater treatment plant will be at the park. So, there was a little bit of back and forth. Counselor Strobel and I tried to mitigate that a little bit and answer some questions. And the recording's up on YouTube, of course, and so I provided some direction as to how the community can access the city website and look at the timeline of how we came to that decision. But since it was a joint meeting with Planning Commission, this was mostly, the bulk of the meeting was discussing city parks and land space. And so, it was mostly just kind of an open forum discussion about that and what we can do in the future. Parks and Rec basically pretty much just weighed in on that. We were just listening ears as they kind of fielded some questions to Taylor and Alan. And it looks like trick-or-trot is, you know, it's going off really, really well. I believe, I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, I did have them in my notes, but it looks like the interest in doing the trick-or-trot is about three times the number of people as it was last year. So, hopefully, that proves to be true, and those people do do the trick-or-trot, and it will be a really good race if that happens. So, that's all I've got.
Sure, I had met with the library board this past week. Numbers still continue to go great for the library board usage, stats just continue to climb month after month. And one in particular, the electronic side is a part that is growing big time with the library. And just a reminder, they don't just do checkout books, but you can also check out eBooks and audiobooks. Those have been outpacing the rest. And then, along those lines, they are getting a new system to give you text notifications for overdue books as well, too. And you can pay online now as well, too. That's particularly of notice, because I think for this last month, fines were up for the first time in a long time, so that'll be a good way to help with that. And then, they've also had a number of retirees or retirements coming up as well, too, quite a few. And we thank them for all that they've done for the library, some of them over twenty years with the library. And wish Michelle luck as she's set out to hire to replace them, they've got big shoes to fill there. That's about all I got then.
Okay, thank you.
No updates.
All right.
I sat in on the DEIC meeting, it looks like we're going to look to do some sort of a workshop to better understand what that is in accordance with some of the complaints that we've been seeing versus social media and hearing on the podium. So, I'm not a liaison to that by no means, but just letting you know that we are looking at that to address.
Great, thank you. And then, I will add a little bit, I had the Clackamas River Upper Watershed tour with Clackamas Water Providers. They were impressed, staff put on a good presentation, the room was full, all the other cities want to come here. But then I shut the door. They loved it, they did a great job, and, you know, they're proud of Clack, or they're proud of Estacada. I mean, the way you guys have built the city and the way it's staying, they love, they want this, you know, it's a rat race down there, and they know it. But we've got something special here, so, yeah, I just got to commend everybody here, because it's your city. You did a great job. But I also have something, at the end of that, we went up and looked at the fish ladder. And if you're like me and you're into fishing at all, that little story your grandpa told you about that four-and-a-half-foot coho in the track was true. It came down to shoot the other day at fifty pounds, and it was a big one. So, if you're out to fish, know that it exists. And that's all I have. So, I will hand it over to the city manager.
Okay, I have just a couple of things to share, and then I'm going to share my time with Peter. But I wanted to just speak to the comments that were shared at the last council meeting about concern with the wastewater facility being taking up a bulk of what is now Portal Park, which is pretty much undeveloped green space, but it's really beautiful down there, there's big trees, it's grassy. You know, there's parking, there's a restroom. It's, the use of it right now is not at its best use, and I think that we can make that better. But we are being conscientious about the use of that property to the greatest degree that we can. And sometimes, you try as hard as you can to keep a certain site in one particular way, but if it's going to be best used as another use, then we'll have to try to mitigate that change. And so, to move the public workshops would add a few million dollars to the projects, and so that's why we're trying to stay out of that. You know, not moving too far into the public works area. But the current site of the sewer plant will be decommissioned, and that site will become available. Could that, whatever is going to be put there is yet to be determined. And so, whether it's additional park space, we'll have to figure out, you know, what is the best way to provide the services that are enjoyed. And we did update the city website with some FAQs in case people want to go back and kind of look at how did we end up at that decision, because that's where we started, tried to get away from there, and then ended up back at the current city property. So, if anybody's looking for information on that, it's on the website. And if there's new questions that we haven't answered, send them in to us, and we'll find answers from the experts and get those up there as well. And then, I just also wanted to let people know that you see that the repairs have started up Main Street, and they will be grinding that, the whole street from the bottom of the hill all the way to Sixth on Friday, and then paving on Saturday. We've tried to, Dawn's done a great job, and our engineer of trying to work with the company to make sure that it impacts the schools as little as possible. I know there's a big football game on Friday night, but they'll be working during the day on Friday, and then during the day on Saturday to get that grind and pave done. And they're also doing, while we're at it, they're doing Westview Court, because that was pretty crumbling up off Ginseng, it was very much crumbling asphalt up there. But anyway, avoid Main Street Friday and Saturday if you can, and then it will be beautiful. So, that's the plan, sometimes things get in the way, but that's what it's looking like is going to happen. So, I don't want to just share a little bit of time with Peter here to share nothing.
So, I heard back from Comcast, somebody learned, I guess, never give the city attorney your cell number. And we're going to be having a conversation tomorrow morning. She has committed to reviewing the public comments section of this meeting, which hopefully will be online tomorrow and available. And then, we're going to have a conversation. I can't make any promises to you, but I'll do everything I can to make sure that at the very least, they're very responsive and aren't blocking any access points on your property. I think that's the minimum they need to do, and that's, I'm going to ask for more tomorrow. I probably shouldn't be saying this, if she's going to be watching the video. Don't want to negotiate against myself, but I'll see what I can do.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you for that. We'll be right ahead, we'll go into council business. The first thing on council business is the downtown Estacada Commission appointment. There are two applicants. The two applicants' names, Melanie, do you have them ready?
Yes, I do. I'm not sure how to pronounce Shane's last name, is it Crowan or Crown? And then, Sherry, so Shane and Sherry, Sherry Fox-Hames or Shane Crowan.
Okay.
And the recommendation from the DEC, they discussed and recommend the city council appoint Sherry Fox-Hames. But that, again, will be up to the council.
Okay, the council's heard the two choices.
I move to appoint Sherry Fox-Hames to the open seat on the downtown Estacada Commission.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
First and second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Done deal. All right. We have a thriving communities grant. Let's talk to that.
And I have Elena online. There was, you know, it just dawned on me, there was nobody online who had public comment, was there? Sadie always watches that, okay. Elena's online in case you have any questions, but just a quick, brief overview of this. It's staff's asking for council support to apply for this grant. It would have no budgetary impact, but would require additional staff time. But the trade-off is that we would get training and assistance for activities, which we could or would expend budget on, such as We could or would expend budget on such as um if we were doing project scoping, pre-engineering studies. Federal grant applications and management. Um, and staff has identified several projects that overlap. Plans such as the wildfire evacuation planning, urban renewal and feasibility. Feasibility planning for the mill property and supporting transportation programs which benefit our older residents. Um, this is just, I think, I believe the letter of interest. And so there is no guarantee. It's through the U S Department of Transportation, but we did apply last time and. We did well. So Elaine, Elaine, if you want to add anything to that, but I think that's basically the overview.
Yeah, we applied last time, um, and we made it where you finalist for it. Uh, in the, we didn't get. The grant last time, but they did say in the follow up that we were highly recommended for approval. They just had more applicants than there was funding and they recommended that we apply again this year. Um, and so. This is just the letter of interest. We submit the letter of interest. They review it, then we'll have a couple more steps if we move forward.
So in that case, we're just looking for consensus. If there's, if there's like an all stop, just let us know. Otherwise, if there's consensus. Then. We would.
I think Jerry has a question.
It's, it's not all stop. I just, um, quick question. Is this, is the grant pretty much this, did it change at all from last year to to this year? Anything in the?
I don't believe so, Elena.
It looks like they added a year three, which is a uh community of practice, which sounds kind of like a support network for the communities. Which are in the thriving communities program. So the, there's a three year process. The first two years are. Deep dive technical assistance and which includes um planning support, grant writing, um financial planning. Um, pre-engineering studies, those kind of things for the first two years. And then the third year is just kind of you have a network of other communities going through the same things that you can connect with.
Anybody else got some questions on that? Oh.
All right.
Okay, consensus to go forward.
Okay, we'll apply, we'll, we'll keep you posted.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Elena.
All right, uh, next we have computer, uh, community sponsorship recommendations.
Yes, this is the community group sponsorships that we budget for each year. Um, this year there was a committee put together of council and a budget committee person to review the applications we received. Um, I could let um either you mayor or councillor Struble might want to speak to it, but they basically have recommend, made a recommendation that. We had enough money to fund eighty-three percent of the um grants that were requested. And so that was split up, so everybody would be awarded eighty-three percent. That would. Even out, that way everybody gets an equal portion of. The um. Now.
And how much would that amount to per applicant?
Um, it's there, it's a variety. Um, Estacada Area Support Our Troops Foundation was eleven hundred seventy-three dollars. The Estacada Fungus Association. Was twelve hundred forty-five dollars because it's eighty-three percent of whatever they asked for. So that's. Hopefully enough to to make an impact. Uh, Saint Vincent de Paul out of the, I think that's out of the Catholic Church. With their food program that they have, um, two thousand ninety-seven, Escada Area Food Bank, two thousand ninety-seven. Philip Foster Farm, two thousand ninety-seven. They must have asked for the max amount. Um, Escada Area Community Events, two thousand ninety-seven, Escada Youth Basketball, two thousand ninety-seven. And Team Melody, which is a local dance team, um, uh, two thousand ninety-seven. So it's a total of fifteen thousand dollars. And that was included in the budget.
I, I'm comfortable with that. Are you, is everybody else comfortable with that?
I move to approve the funding recommendation provided by the subcommittee.
Yeah, first or second?
A second.
First and second, all those favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, motion passes, thank you. Okay, now we're at the ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero zero six. An ordinance amending chapter thirteen point oh eight, Storm Sewers of the Estacada Municipal Code.
Okay, thank you. This is an ordinance, so it's the first reading of the ordinance. It'll come back to you um if it is approved tonight. And it's basically, we're basically doing some housekeeping here in our code. Um, the, these updates to the code will. Help us address new T M D L, which is total maximum daily load for our storm water systems. Now that we've crossed over five thousand. Um, they, we have additional requirements for our uh storm water management. And um, so this will help us to be able to um. Fund that as well as the, make some adjustments to what was called out in the uh for senior rates. Um, previously, in fact, I can't, it's in the staff report here, but. A few years ago, we made changes to water and sewer rates. Because it calls out a specific age and a specific amount of money that will will allow seniors to qualify for the discounts, which would. Um, disqualify a lot of people at this point. And so we're gonna uh remove that and then um. Just basically clean up that section of the code. But if there's any questions, Elena's been working a lot on the storm water plan. Um, I've been kind of winging it for a while because it was when you're really small, they give you these suggestions, but it's not really. There wasn't, they didn't have a lot of teeth to, you know, we're just doing the best we could. And now as we grow. Um, they have higher and higher. It's like getting, you know, going up in the levels of school. You have higher and higher expectations and they're um. So Elena has been working on that and will be turning in our. Annual report in November first. Anything else, Elena?
Um, I, I, I do want to say some of the things that we're gonna be adding as a requirement of the TMDL. We have some time to do it. But they, they could potentially be kind of costly. One of them is mapping our storm water system, which with the new developments, no big deal. But some of our older developments, um, especially, you know, when we're downtown, we're gonna have to hire somebody to. Uh, take a camera through the system in order to find out where some of these uh things, the lines are. So and that can, that can really add up there. Um, and then one of the, I think the biggest concerns is we're gonna have to do some post-construction. Site runoff at and control and we haven't done any post-construction follow up. Uh, ever. So adding that in while we have a few years to implement it is is gonna be a lot more staff time.
Any questions?
Thank you, Bruce, good.
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero zero six and ordinance amending chapter thirteen point oh eight. Storm sewers of the Estacada Municipal Code.
First, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, I have two seconds there, you can pick either one. Um, all those papers say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Okay, next we're at business license, um, authorization. That's for Adams and Acres, I think. Is that right?
Yes, okay, so um. This is, I'll just try to summarize this. I'm not sure if anyone related to this is present. And I didn't, I didn't hear back from them whether they would be attending, but um, we had a business license applicant. And also her property manager asked, came to the last council meeting and were asking you all to agree that their proposed. Indoor-outdoor dog boarding facility um was similar enough to the uses allowed in that zone, which is the riverfront commercial zone. This is at the old Forest Service Building. Um, in order for it to be licensed, business, you know, bus, we can issue business license, licenses if. The use, the type of business is permitted outright in the zone, more zoning stuff. But that use is not listed in that zone. Dog boarding facilities or anything related to that is not listed in that zone. It's also not listed anywhere else in the code. So one option that we have, I think at the, at the last meeting, there was some um. The property manager, James Heeb, was asking you all, you know, what if, what if this dog boarding facility provides. Um, hunting-related services, you know, dog training for hunting, you know, does that. Meet, is that, does that close enough to meet the intent of the underlying zone as like a um tourism? Kind of area, right? The riverfront commercial zone is intended to be all about tourism. Are you looking at that spider hanging in the air? I was like, why is she making this face at me? Oh, it's a spider. So. I feel we, our job is. To note whether or not. The proposed use seems to meet the intent of the underlying zone. Um. It doesn't seem to meet the intent of the underlying zone. The council's welcome to disagree. Um. But we do recognize, A, it's kind of close if they would be doing, if they would indeed be doing, you know, hunting dog training. It's related to um hunting, which is specifically called out as one of the kind of tourism activities that. Is um intended to be supported by that zone. Um, and two, we recognize that it is a need in town. And it's not listed as an allowed use anywhere in our zones. And we have had um. Other folks, you know, come to our office and say, hey, I want to open like a dog boarding type facility or a doggy daycare. Where can I do it? And similar to the childcare issue, we would have to say, sorry, basically nowhere. Um, it's just not something that our code allows. But we understand that it's definitely a need. So um. The solution that we're proposing is not to allow this, not to consider this use. And outright, you know, we're proposing that it probably shouldn't be considered to fall under one of the listed categories in that zone. Um, but instead, send it through the conditional use process, which allows us to do several things. Um, one, it allows us to provide the standard public noticing for land use decisions. So all of the neighboring property owners within a hundred feet. Would get noticed that this proposal is coming in. Um. That's important. They'd be allowed to, you know, testify, ask questions. Um, two, it would allow the city. Usually the Planning Commission makes decisions on conditional uses, but I think the council could if you wanted to go that route. Um, it allows the city to consider the potential negative impacts of whatever it is they're proposing to do. Um, and. In the conditional use process and other land use processes, uh, in the decision, you impose conditions of approvals. You say, yeah, you can do that there, but you have to put up fencing. You have to um prevent. Noise levels in excess of whatever. You have to. Implement these odor control measures, right? You allow, you allow it, but with conditions. Um. Three, I think we want to avoid setting a precedent of stretching the intent. Of the intended meaning of a permitted use category. Um, and so Peter probably could talk more about precedence, but.
Well, so my understanding at the last meeting was the primary purpose of the business was to train dogs for uh duck hunting and upland bird hunting. Which is uh intensive four to six month process requires the dogs to be boarded there and receive all the training and. And either of, either of those hunting is active outdoor recreation, tourism, both of those are activities. Um, in staff talking with um the, the person that wants to run it, um. That, that, I guess, assumption that that I had made based on what I had, I maybe didn't hear it correctly. Her primary desire was to have a doggy daycare. So it would be like a daily doggy daycare where people would drop off their dogs and um then pick them up in the evening. Uh, which, which seems like it's something that people need. Um, but, but there's really not a nexus there. Like there, her original plan wasn't to maybe some overnight boarding, but not to do this kind of act, this very specialized training. So um, I, I felt like. My understanding versus the, the business owner's understanding was sufficiently different that I probably needed to bring this back to council. Um, and um. And, and I, I think that Taylor's approach is, is uh probably a wise one. Um, that we're probably far enough away from active outdoor recreation. Less walking your dog, I guess, but that's not really a tourism activity. So I, I thought we should bring it back to you. Um, just so you had a better understanding of, of the project as it's anticipated going forward.
Hey, that was a good idea, bringing it back to us, definitely. I was under the assumption that was the hunting, that I think that's what they emphasized, so. Um, that changes the game just a bit. Um, I don't know, right?
I think that it should be something, I mean, it's something that's needed in the town somewhere. If it's not outlined in the code, I think that the conditional use is a good solution for it. I could see people that are coming out to float the river or do activities that are water-related. Wanting a good place to drop their dogs off while they're going and doing activities out here and going around. I think it would, it would be a pretty good business as long as it doesn't interfere with any of the bus, other businesses that. Um, are in the same complex. And I imagine that the property owners wouldn't want to put another business in a position that would be. Uncomfortable for them. So I'm on board with the conditional use.
Um, yeah, I, I like the conditional use option. Um, also, just when, when reading through this, I like that. You know, it also gives um neighboring businesses an opportunity to, to weigh in, especially since they're going in right next door to a daycare. So I would like the daycare owners to have that opportunity to ask questions about, you know. Safety, fencing, noise, all that sort of thing. So I think that this um conditional use is um, it's a good approach, in my opinion.
Well, I just want to clarify, going, going with the conditional use um avenue, we're not saying no. We're not saying yes either from that standpoint. We're just sending them through what would be, like you said, that normal channel and um. I'm fine with the planning commission. I don't know how others feel, but they would be the ones to review this. It's their area of expertise. From my standpoint.
All right.
Okay, and so um, thank you. That, those are all helpful comments and um. I want to request that the motion you make here do two things at once. Because I think the cleanest thing to do, um, just administratively for the future, so that we're not having to track these. Conditional use approvals into the future. Um, and for the reasons that, you know, you were noting, like it's a need in town. Maybe it should be allowed in other places too. Um, so I was, I was gonna recommend both authorizing this business as a conditional use now. We can get them started on that application process now and um directing staff to um. Initiate a code amendment to explicitly list dog boarding facilities in. We could, we could start with um listing that, listing them as a conditional use in all of the zone, you know, we could um. Propose putting them wherever. And then when staff brings the proposal back to you, you could agree or disagree with where we put them. Um, but what would be helpful tonight would be authorize this business as a conditional use now and then direct staff to. Initiate a development code amendment to explicitly list dog boarding facilities um as a conditional use in. I think we should start with all commercial mixed use zones and then you guys could chop those back when we bring it back to you.
I so move.
Sorry, that's complicated, but yeah.
Um, second.
I'll second it.
Yeah, first and second, all in favor say aye. All those opposed? Thank you too.
Thank you.
All right, we're at the, well, actually I want to go over this thing I added at the end, um, if that's okay. Um, I took a field trip down by our lakeshore to look at ongoing issues and I pulled a couple of the traffic safety people with me. Uh, to kind of take pictures of issues that we have down there. And you all have those in front of you. Now, I'd like to, to talk about a solution that might work if we get P G E at the table. The city of Estacada, the Forest Service, and everybody who might be attached to this, because this falls in a lot of different jurisdictions. P G E own has rights just off the, the river. Um, and uh, the Forest Service has some of this, City of Escada has some of this. So we're, we're, we're suffering from a major problem down there. And as you can see by those pictures, it's pretty bad. And that's all the way to the bridge from the back of the restaurant all the way to the bridge. And some of these are right below. Uh, the Fox Motel, they've carved out the hillside of the river and actually have like. Areas down there that are flattened out, that are carved into the cliffside, that they're in disposing of stuff and. Tents and all kinds of stuff. So I want you to see the degree of the problems we're having down there because it's, it, we've got to stop it somewhere. This is a good time to get something in place. So I was coming to you to see if it would be okay if we set something up with this meeting. With these agencies to see if we can get something done about what's going on down there. If we all get on the same page, I think we fix this problem. Cause that's something you'd be interested in.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So that's it. We'll see if we can get that going. All right. Next, citizen and community group comments. I don't have any in front of me. Anybody online? No, okay. Um, mayor council reports and comments. So I will start off with you, Mike. Um, mayor, council reports and comments. So I will start off with you, Mike.
Yeah.
It's your night.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming, um, and also offer, if anyone is interested in learning more about the process that the city uses for zoning, applica, you know, permits and things like that. I'd be more than happy to make myself available and, uh, my email's Michael McElroy at cityinvestigated.org. And if anyone wants to sit down with me for up to an hour or so, I'll make myself available. I think that with a clear understanding of the process, some of the frustration, at least would be removed. You may not, you may still not like the project, whatever it may be. But I think if you, if everyone understood the process more, there would be less frustration and less, uh, less hate going on. So be happy to make myself available. Thanks everyone for coming. Thanks to the staff for all the work they did. Um, we did take a tour today of the Tri-Cities Sewer Facility, um, looking at some, a plant that is similar to what we're going to be putting in, in Estacada, uh, uses a membrane system, a different type of membrane system. And, uh, it was an enclosed facility and couldn't smell a sniff of it outside. And it stunk like nothing I've ever smelt on the inside is, is a horrible place to be. I don't know if I'd ever get used to it on the inside, but but, uh, thankfully, once you stepped outside the doors, it was, it was no smell. So I'm excited about, uh, not having that odor as we drive down the highway someday soon.
All right, Jerry.
Um, again, you know, thank you all for coming out. It's always great to see a, a big crowd in here. Um, thank you, staff. An amazing job as always. And a special thank you to Peter for, um, getting that Comcast thing set up so quickly. Um, it's nice to know that, you know, that, that, uh, that, that battle is something the city's paying attention to. Um, I would like to comment, I know Melanie spoke on it earlier, but the, um, the wastewater treatment plant, um, bear in mind the, you know, as she said, that, uh, where the current plant is, that is all going to be, um, torn down. And it's going to be repurposed. And then we will be, I'm sure that at some point we will be asking for community input on what to put there, because we want that to be, that, that's what you see when you come into town. We want the, we want something inviting there. We want something that's going to, you know, that, we don't want a wastewater treatment plant, you know, we want to put something there that is going to be inviting when people are driving into town, something that looks nice, something that, you know, says this is Estacada. So um, once we get to that process, um, that, you know, I'm sure we'll be reaching out for community input on what to put there. Um, but we're not just taking away to take away, we're taking away and we're giving back um, to that park area, depending, you know, it might not be exactly what it is now, it might not all be green space, but um, we, we are going to repurpose that area, um, for, you know, park space and usage. So, um, just keep that in mind when, when everybody's talking about the wastewater treatment plant. We're trying to make this, uh, um, as easy and, uh, beneficial to the city as possible. Um, thank you all. Great conversations tonight. So thank you.
Sure.
Um, I want to thank, uh, Estacada School District for coming out tonight, um, uh, Superintendent Carpenter for giving this, uh, nice proposal for the bond. Um, I think it's something that we definitely need and I know I've said this before, but as prices increase, it's kind of one of those things like buy once, cry once. It's like a lovely term I like to use nowadays. Um, but I, yeah, there's, I have two kids in the school district right now. And, um, yeah, it's, as much as the money hurts, it's, it's, it's just going to get more expensive down the road. So I appreciate all the, the work that went into the bond proposal. Um, I hope that, um, people in the community reach out to the school district, um, for further questions or concerns. And, um, you can get that answered. Thanks, city staff, um, for all the information. Uh, Taylor, appreciate having you at that planning commission joint meeting with Parks and Rec. That was, that was nice, just to kind of get piggyback off some, some staff input there and, um, good discussion tonight. And I also want to thank the audience, those of you who had come out and commented this evening, thank you for just, you know, being respectful and considerate and see when your, when your nice things get done. So. So I just really, really appreciate that. And, um, yeah, have a good night.
Very.
Well, I just want to thank all that came out tonight and spoke, uh, appreciate hearing from you. We really do. And then, uh, staff, thanks for prepping us so well again for this meeting and that airport discussion as well earlier too. That was very helpful.
Uh, thank you, everybody for coming. Um, I think we got a lot of things clarified tonight. It's really, really nice. Uh, the wastewater treatment plant we toured today was great. I'm really encouraged that it will not smell. Um, as I visit timber a lot, so, um, it did remind me of smell at some points, but um, I wanted to point out that, uh, the Arts Commission is holding a writing workshop this Thursday at, at Farm. And then next Thursday, there's going to be a vegan tamale class at the library. So that should be exciting.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Uh, really appreciate seeing more people here and stressing what, what's really important to you that helps us address things in a more timely and punctual manner. I'd like to, uh, just echo Councilman McElroy and say that I'd like to make myself available as well. It's just Jonathan Metcalf at cityinvestigated.org. If you need anything, if you want to talk about things, um, we are trying to work on being more transparent and, and just improving communication between the community and leadership. That's something that's been talked about behind closed doors as well as in public format in front of you guys that are here right now. So if we can do that, please email me or like Mr. McElroy said, and like, give us a chance to work with you uh, outside of social media, please. We're, we do not bite, I promise.
All right, you heard from all of them. Again, we want to thank all of you for coming out tonight. It's nice, like, again, to see this room full. This is most amount of people. I mean, you've had, what, seven, eight consecutive meetings full? I mean, that's impressive, uh, by any means. It means people are listening. So we're hearing you and you're hearing us. And that's a good thing. That shows the government's working. So that said, I want to adjourn this meeting and tell you all, don't forget spooky walk on Halloween. It's going to be for the kids and I hope everybody comes out. You got the trunks open and candy in it and the stores will be full of candy and watch our children have a great time. So thank you again for tonight. This meeting is adjourned.